All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Appreciate everybody who's online as well as those of you who are here in person. So we are called to order for city council regular session Thursday, September 7, 2023. If you would, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Miskaman?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mayor Abou Osley? Mr. Grant?
Here.
Ms. Menzer?
Here.
Mr. Sterned?
Here.
Okay, if we can have a moment of silence, please. Very good. Thank you. Okay, this afternoon, we have two proclamations, the first of which is a proclamation for library card signup month. And so I've asked council member Miskaman to read that. Do we have somebody here that is? Oh, yes, Bill's here.
Great.
All right.
So whereas a library card is one of the most important school supply of all, and whereas signing up for a library card is the first step toward academic achievement and lifelong learning, and whereas libraries play an important role in the education and development of children, and whereas library programs serve residents of all ages from early literacy to homework help to GED classes and beyond, and whereas librarians lead the way in creating inclusive spaces and developing diverse collections for people of all backgrounds to connect and learn together, and whereas libraries bridge the digital divide by providing a full range of information and services to children and adult learners, and whereas libraries continue to transform and expand their services in ways that meet the needs of the communities they serve, and whereas libraries open a world of infinite possibilities through resources and services to help people pursue their passions and give students the tools to succeed in school and beyond. Now therefore, I, Gage Miskaman, on behalf of Grant Harper, Mayor Pro Tem of the City Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim September 2023 as a library card signup month and urge residents of the City Marion to sign up for their own library card today.
Yeah, absolutely. Few words, anything? Picture first? Should I pull my library card?
Well, thank you on behalf of the Library Board of Trustees. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. I'd like to just take this opportunity to also remind all of our residents if they were unable to make it to our grand opening celebration last weekend. And get their library card to please come in. We welcome everybody in the community to come in, get their free library card. And this part Randy was teasing me about, the Marion Public Library has been entered into the Iowa League of Cities People All-Star Tournament on social media, and we need everyone's help to recognize our wonderful library building. So please help us gain the lead by participating in this social media fan vote. And here's how you can do so. So visit the Iowa League of Cities Facebook page. Scroll to find the album titled 2023 People's All-Star Tournament Final Four posted two or three days ago. Click on the photo of the Marion Public Library and like or love the photo. And then we'll get the vote for that. So in the top, the final four, we're hoping to make it to the final bracket of the final two. So thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Mayor.
Thank you. I think just on the heels of that proclamation, Bill, to, you know, just repeat a couple of the things that the mayor shared at your grand opening. It was a huge, huge effort to bring that library to, to life. And your staff did that on the heels of also having to respond to the deratio and have alternate operating mode for, for many, many months. So kudos to the library in total for, for what you've achieved in that. So thank you. Okay, I have a proclamation that I will read for POW and MIA Recognition Day. Just to confirm, do we have anybody from the Legion or VFW here receiving this? Okay. Whereas, United States National POW MIA Recognition Day is observed across the nation on the third Friday of September each year. And whereas this day is, this is a day for Americans to honor the admirable bravery and immeasurable sacrifice of prisoners of war and missing in action soldiers. Whereas, eighty-one thousand five hundred American service personnel are still missing in action, which includes over one thousand six hundred Iowa veterans. And whereas, the families and friends of accounted for veterans, as well as countless fellow veterans and other Americans, still await recovery and identification of their remains or clarity regarding their fates. And whereas, the City of Marion commends and endorses the national commitment to account fully as possible for Americans still missing from our nation's war. Wars. Now, therefore, I, Grant Harper, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim September 15, 2023 as the POW MIA Recognition Day and encourage the residents of Marion to pay tribute and observe this day with appropriate ceremonies, honor, and respect. The footnote that I would place with this proclamation is, is that this is exceptionally timely. And why? In nineteen seventy-three, during the months of May, I'm sorry, February through March, there were upwards of five hundred and ninety POWs released by the Vietnamese on the heels of the Vietnam War. And it was this proclamation coincides with that fifty-year anniversary. And I want to thank one of our great participating residents, Frank Sherman, who's here tonight, for bringing this to our attention. So this, I think, really underpins this proclamation and its importance. Thank you. Okay. So now we are, enter our public forum segment for the for this evening. This is a time for members of the public who are here to come forward and speak on regarding topics that are on our agenda for this evening, with the exception of those that will have a public hearing and comments for those items will be addressed during the public hearing. So is there anybody here who wants to address Council?
Yes, I'm here to address you guys. I'm not sure if this is the first time or the second time, the two different hearings.
Okay.
I have some, I'm going to cut off, but there's some issues here.
Sir, can you also identify yourself and name and address, please?
I currently live in, uh, Walford, but I've lived in Marion quite a bit, for a better part, on and off of twenty years.
And your last name?
Mazguy.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. And your address there?
P O Box 110, Walford, Iowa.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I'm here to talk to you guys about in 2020, a man by the name of Casey came here and made a complaint to your building inspection department. And unfortunately, instead of fixing the issues such as broken windows and broken heating systems, the Marion Police Department violently arrested him and he was found not guilty. In 2021, there was malicious charges that continued to happen and reports by many people, including Dan, Dustin, Brian, and many others to this department about this building. In 2022, everybody keeps reporting these issues and nothing's being done. The Marion Police Department arrested Casey Veneble inside his own house with no search warrant. I'm going to say that a second time. They arrested him inside his own house with no search warrant. The Marion Police Department and Michael Kits Miller. Now, in twenty, and also, the Chief of Police, Michael Kits Miller, he also lied in court. He committed perjury by saying that Ryan Waller was not in the building on the day in question, and that was to maliciously prosecute an innocent person and to be convicting, convicted of charges that they did not commit. In 2023, there's still broken windows, third world living conditions, and the charges in Lynn County, it's like a, it's like a shower. It just keeps on going. I included in that packet for you guys, you guys can keep that. We got broken screens, broken windows, unsafe stairs, and bricks just tumbling. We actually got a window on the grass. It's common sense. You don't need to be a lawyer to know windows don't belong on, on the grass. Any legitimate building inspector would walk by and be like, there's a problem here. And we've tried to talk to Matt Newhouse. We've tried to talk, tried to schedule a meeting with Ryan Waller, and nobody wants to talk about this building. It, it's literally, there's bats, there's animals. And in the back of the pocket, too, I also brought up that Ryan Waller actually has a history. I'm not sure if you guys did a background check on, on him or not before you put him into position, but he has a history of creating a hostile work environment. I also did a Florida request of his previous job at the Indiana of the City Hall, and it shows a lot of people that show he bullies and he intimidates. And he has made multiple people feel very uncomfortable in the job. And if you guys could do some action and, you know, look into this, look into Ryan Waller, look into Michael Kits Miller, and Casey Veneble also specifically wants to know, are there going to be charges against Alicia Appernathy and Mike Kits Miller in the Marion Police Department about all the violence and all the revenue collection? Thank you for your time today, guys.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else to address Council? Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Larry Nipple. I live at thirty-three thirteen Prairie Bend Circle. I'm here for one purpose this evening. I would like to ask the City Council to seriously consider doing some beautification of the roundabouts that we now have in the city and may have in the future. I'm encouraged to see the plantings that are on the streets uptown, the things that the city has been doing. Makes me proud to be a citizen here. However, except a couple of that have grass, most of our roundabouts are concrete. Concrete does not absorb water. It's not beautiful, I don't think. For eighteen years, I spent volunteering as a AARP driver safety instructor, and long before we had roundabouts in the city, or many of them in Iowa, we talked to the people attending our classes about roundabouts, why they're being built, obviously for safety, number two, how to safely negotiate roundabouts. And in videos I used in that presentation showed, and it was explained that these can be beautified. Number one, it helps people see them before they get to them. And number two, they just look a lot nicer than concrete or grass. So that's my only purpose here tonight is ask the City Council to seriously consider doing that to continue the improvement of our city to make it look a lot better. So thank you.
Thanks, Larry. And I should just remind, this, this segment of our agenda is to address items that are on the agenda before Council, and we'll have another generalized comment period at the end. No, that's, that's okay. My, my oversight in both cases. Okay, is there anybody else here that's here to address Council for anything that's on the agenda? Okay, very good. Thank you for that, and we'll move on to our consent agenda. Councilmember Menzer?
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 to F5, Resolutions 31573 to 31589.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, including items A1 through F5, Resolutions 31573 through 31589. Discussion. Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the project calendar as follows. This will be motion to receive and file the compensation study final report from Baker Tilly and Resolution Number 31590, adopting the general pay plan and pay policies.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the compensation study report from Baker Tilly. This is Resolution Number 31590, adopting the general pay plan and pay policies. Discussion. I do want to emphasize just thanking everybody, Lucas, the team, everybody involved, to bring us to this point. This is absolutely a foundational piece of work that will serve as well as we go forward as we manage our pay structure. So thank you. Okay, it's, it's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 31590, adopting the pay plan and pay policies as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-three, amending Chapter 274, Article 3 of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding storm water utility, and this is the initial consideration. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-three, amending Chapter 274, Article 3 of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding storm water utility. This is our initial consideration. Discussion. Very good. All those in favor of approving ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-three, amending Chapter 274, Article 3 as stated, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we now move to a public hearing regarding an overhead electric line easement. This is a request from ITC Midwest LLC. And Mr. Barcalo? It's all yours. Thank you.
So just to give some context on what we're talking about, so we're starting at the Marion substation that exists, that's in the back of Hannah Park for reference. Menards is down here. So it's going along that existing line that is there, going on the west side of Menards, going in front of Menards, along one hundred, and then going along one hundred all the way to Forty-Fourth, and then their new substation that they built on Union and Forty-Fourth. And so a portion of that, the trail that we have basically on the west side of Menards, that's the city's property. And so there, this public hearing is to grant them the next item, which is purchasing utility rights to basically put more additional utilities in that area, and I believe it's fifty-five thousand and change that they're paying for that.
Okay. Okay, is there anybody here from the public to address Council on this matter? Have we received any correspondence or commentary from departments or Rachel?
I have not received any comments.
Okay. All right. All right, we will then close the public hearing and move on to the resolution. Councilmember Jensen?
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve Resolution Number 31591, approving an overhead electric line easement with ITC Midwest LLC.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 31591, approving an overhead electric line easement with ITC Midwest LLC. Discussion.
Yeah, just one question, Mike. How close are their poles going to be to the existing trail?
So as part of the, both the trunk sewer project that's under construction now and the trail project, we had them align it so that we could build the trail and the sewer where we needed to. So I don't know the exact dimension. It, it won't be like directly adjacent, but it will be in the vicinity.
In the vicinity, but no conflict, no concern with the trail or anything in that area? Okay.
We had both consultants for both projects review this before.
Okay, so it's all coordinated?
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on this? Mike, thanks for adding the map into this. That, that's helpful, I think, for the public record on this. The description of the quarter corners and all that stuff in the easement document were a little mysterious. Okay, very good. All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 31591, approving an electric, overhead electric line easement with ITC Midwest LLC. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we move then into a public hearing regarding the Habitat for Humanity Preliminary Site Development Plan for property located at eight fifteen Fourth Avenue, Marion, Iowa. And this is requested by Cedar Valley Habitat for Humanity Incorporated. And Dave, it's all yours.
Yes, as you said, this is a public hearing with the preliminary site development plan. This presentation will cover the next two items with the final site development plan as well. Property is located in the highlighted red on the screen. It's on the corner of Fourth Avenue and Eighth Street. It's a vacant lot and has been for some time. This was part of the Carriage Corners Project, future phase. That project, of course, is stalled, and the property has since been sold to, this portion of the property has since been sold to Habitat for Humanity. They are looking at to construct a two-bedroom home with a full basement, foundation with an attached two-stall garage on the rear of the property. The home is running through the PUD process because it's actually a little bit quicker than actually rezoning the property to allow for a single-family home, but it has to go through this public process. Pictures of the home are on, on the screen. Obviously, the setbacks are slightly reduced on the front for a fifteen-foot setback, and that is to reflect the, really the character of the neighborhood with reduced setbacks, it's an older neighborhood. Rather than push it back twenty-five feet is typically required. It would look a lot out of place. So it's being pushed up forward to blend in, has the front porch that many of the other homes in the area has. Again, stated, it's a two-star, two, two-stall garage on the rear access off the public alley. It's about thirty-nine feet deep from alley to garage doors. There'll be quite a bit of off-street parking provided with the home, in addition to the, the rest of the on-street parking in the area. Should be noted that this will be the third Habitat for Humanity project in this neighborhood. They have two homes going up to the south, southwest of this property, supposed to be the third home in the neighborhood. Great new investment in the construction in an existing neighborhood. P and Z met on August eighth, and they did recommend approval six-zero.
Thank you, Dave. Is there anybody here to speak to this matter as part of the public hearing? Have we received any correspondence, Dave?
No.
No? Rachel?
I have not received any.
Okay. No correspondence has been received outside of this meeting, so that's for the record. Okay, thank you. We'll close the public hearing then and move on to the resolutions.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve Resolution Number 31592, approving the Habitat for Humanity Preliminary Site Development Plan for property located at eight fifteen Fourth Avenue, Marion, Iowa, Cedar Valley Habitat for Humanity Incorporated.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 31592, approving the Habitat for Humanity Preliminary Site Development Plan for property located at eight fifteen Fourth Avenue, Marion, Iowa. And this is Cedar Valley Habitat for Humanity. Discussion. Questions? Pretty straightforward? Okay. All right. All those in favor of Resolution Number 31592 as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve Resolution Number 31593, approving the Habitat for Humanity Final Site Development Plan for property located at eight fifteen Fourth Avenue, Marion, Iowa, Cedar Valley Habitat for Humanity, Inc. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 31593, approving the Habitat for Humanity Final Site Development Plan for property located at eight fifteen Fourth Avenue, Marion, Iowa, Cedar Valley Habitat for Humanity is the requester. Discussion. Okay. All those in favor of Resolution Number 31593 as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we move into another public hearing regarding a request to rezone properties from Lynn County Ag, Agriculture, and USR Urban Services Residential to SRE, Suburban Residential Estate, for properties of twenty-six seventy-four and twenty through twenty-seven oh six East Robbins Road, Marion, Iowa. And Nicole, you're here to tell us all about it.
I am. So good evening. The city is initiating the zoning of nine properties along East Robbins Road. These nine properties outlined on the screen were annexed back in May of this year. After ninety days, if no one from that area has come forward with a petition to zone the property, the city shall rezone the property. That way it does match in with the rest of the city zoning districts. During the annexation process for these properties, the SRE zoning district was identified. At that time, the proposed district does align with our future land use map of the comprehensive plan. It also aligns with the recently reviewed Cedar Rapids and Marion Growth Area Study Plan for that single-family low-density residential. The intent of the SRE district is to accommodate for that low-density, single-family residential. I'm aware they're characterized by more of a semi-rural neighborhood. So this area on the north side of East Robbins Road, they're, they don't have that standard curb and gutter like in the suburban or more urbanized cross-section. As for the other districts within the city, we did review them for these properties as well. The SRE district was the one that was identified, that best fit. Again, not only the character, but also looking at limiting the non-conformities that were being created with the existing properties that are out there, while protecting existing semi-rural character. The SRE district helps do this by not allowing these properties to be subdivided smaller than half-acre lots. So it also helps keep them that large semi-rural character that they currently have out there without being further subdivided into lots that might be around a quarter of an acre. So staff did mail the subject property owners in this area back in June to let them know that this is what we were going to be proceeding with to see if they had any questions. No one came in to talk to us, but we did speak with a couple of the residents over the phone and via email, just kind of regarding questions. They had a lot of their questions were in regards to more of the annexation process that had been completed already. But we did kind of talk through a few of the outlots that are in this area and what the new zoning would mean for those outlots. As an outlaw, they are considered non-buildable. Until they're platted in accordance with um right the subdivision regulation. So those current outlots with. In the county versus within the city, they still have the same um uses, which is non-buildable. Otherwise, staff did mail out um postcards to surrounding property owners within three hundred feet. Before the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we did receive one um phone call from a gentleman on the south side of. East Robbins Road. He was just more curious about what the rezoning entailed. Um otherwise, we didn't hear from anyone else and then no one spoke at the public hearing during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The commission did recommend approval um six to zero.
Very good, thank you. Is there anybody here uh to address this matter before council? Part of our public hearing. Okay, and Nicole, you referenced the correspondence and interactions you've received. Has there been anything else that we might have received?
I have not received anything.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will exit the public hearing and uh then move to the motion.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-four approving our request to rezone property from Lynn County Ag. Agriculture and U S R Urban Service Area to S R E. Suburban Residential Estate for properties located along East Robbins Road between Meadow Knowles. Road and Mulberry Drive Marion Iowa. This will be the initial consideration.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-four. Approving a request to rezone property from Lin- Lynn County Ag. Agriculture and U S R Urban Service Area to S R E. Suburban Residential Estate for properties located along East Robbins Road between Moto- Meadow Knowles Road. And Mulberry Drive Marion Iowa. Initial consideration. Discussion. I guess the thing that I like about this is it just uh basically it kind of aligns every those properties into one designation and. Uh that is um I think a desirable feature of this. Okay, all those in favor. Of ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-four, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. All right, now we are to our segment. Uh public forum for general comments from the public on anything that council should have awareness on. Um please recognize we won't take any action on those comments at this meeting due to requirements for open meetings law. But uh we then may do so at future meetings. So. Is there anybody here additionally to address counsel for this general commentary period? Yes, sir. Come on forward. And if we could to uh. Please state your name and address, if you would.
I'm Pastor Gary Sneller. I'm the interim pastor at Marion Christian Church. Our address is ten fifty McGowan Boulevard. Here in Marion. And I'm here tonight to just share with you that one hundred and eighty years ago. Marion Christian Church was established as one of the first Christian congregations in the city of Marion. For one hundred and eighty years, Marion Christian Church has been deeply involved in ministry within this community. Marion Food Pantry, Marion Cares, Lynn Haven Care Center, Marion Senior Living, First Light Christian Fellowship. For racial reconciliation, Stand in Unity Faith Coalition for racial justice, equity, diversity and inclusion. Marion Open and Affirming Congregations, Habitat for Humanity, Crop Walk. Uh Red Cross Blood Drives, Share Iowa Support for Marion Independent School District and Lenmar School Districts and so much more. Three years ago, our church building was devastated by the derecho and much of our ministry was put on hold. Now, after three years of slowly repairing our building. Marion Christian Church is ready to celebrate the reopening of our church building and one hundred and eighty years of ministry in this community. On Saturday, September sixteen, from noon until four, we are hosting a community open house with food trucks, entertainment and tours of the church building. Mayor Nick is participating in a brief ceremony, grand opening ceremony at three P M on that day. And then the following day, Sunday, September seventeen, we will celebrate our one hundred and eightieth anniversary as a congregation. With a special worship service at ten A M. Marion Christian Church is excited to move forward in our ministry to the citizens of Marion. You are all invited to celebrate with us.
Thank you very much. Very nice. Quite a milestone. All right, is there anybody else here to address council? I think we're gonna have a history lesson. Of sorts.
Good evening, members. My name is Scott Barnes and I live at twenty-two thirty-one Tamarack Circle. Now, I know that you know. That other councils have faced challenging situations with compensation. But it's kind of an abstract concept and. I thought for kind of a Memorial Paul Draper moment. I would recount an instance where there was a pretty significant compensation controversy. Here in Marion. Back on March seventeenth nineteen twenty-four, Saint Patrick's Day. Councilmember Bowman gavelled in a special session for the Marion City Council. And after addressing the fact that the city clerk was going to be gone, so they came up with a pro tem for the city clerk. He, the next person that came up was the fire committee chairman. A a council member by the name of Carson. And he read the following petition. Gentlemen. No disrespect here, but let's face it, it was nineteen twenty-three. We, the members of the Marion Fire Department, after having taken a vote at our regular meeting of March fourth. In regards to change in wages of our chief and nightman, believe that at this time it is not advisable. Since it will place our city council in a place necessary for them to hire a new chief and nightman. And at the wages set by the city council on March third, we believe that no competent men. Can be hired at those wages. Our present chief and nightman feel. That they cannot live on such a wage and it will be necessary for them to resign. Therefore, since it takes considerable time to break in new men. As and as the danger from reckless driving, no knowledge of the equipment, chemicals and et cetera. And exceeding danger from exploding of the chemical tanks and et cetera. Which might cause much loss to property and danger of lives, we therefore earnestly ask. The city council to reconsider this motion so that we may continue as at present. Please advise us by the fifteenth of March so that we may make provisions to hold our present forces together. Yours truly, Marion Fire Department, George Loonsey, Secretary. What's going on here? Well. Turns out that two weeks prior. The city council approved ordinance number one eighty-three. And what ordinance number one eighty-three did. Was it struck out the words and figures twelve hundred dollars in line nine of the said section three. By and inserted in lieu thereof the words six hundred dollars. Marion was paying its fire chief a hundred dollars a month, twelve hundred dollars a year. And from what I hear from the fire department, that hasn't changed. I don't know. And they also had a night driver that they were paying twenty-five dollars a month for, three hundred dollars a year. Well. What prompted this ordinance? Well, it turns out that in nineteen twenty-three, the year prior. The state auditor showed up. And the state auditor took a look at the Marion books. And issued a report in July. Now, the actual report itself has been lost. State Historical Society doesn't have it. The auditor doesn't have it. Nobody has. But in that report, what it said was that Marion was paying its fire chief out of a fire maintenance fund. They didn't have any money in it. And that's exactly what was going on. Uh they were drawing warrants against a fire maintenance fund that nobody had ever bothered to fund. That immediately led to the situation of what what are we gonna do about this? Well. At this city council meeting on March third nineteen twenty-four, they said, we're just gonna cut everybody's pay. Needless to say. That didn't go over real well. According to the article from the Marion Sentinel. All of the firemen threatened to resign. And leave the city without any fire coverage at all. So what happened? Well, there was obviously this immediate discussion. And. It was moved by one of the members. And seconded. That the former action regarding those salaries be immediately rescinded. And by a vote of. It was five to one. Uh a a council member by the name of Falcon voted no. Um that was rescinded and the pay was returned the way it was. Now, there was some deals kind of worked on the side as far as selling some land so that the fire maintenance fund could be. Uh replenished, but it was something that was quite an item during that period. And represented kind of a controversial compensation instance. And as you guys were considering the compensation for the city today. I thought that that would be a nice example to kind of grab on to to say. Yeah, we've actually faced this before. Our predecessors have and they got through it. And by God, we can get through it too. Thank you all very much for your time. Take care. Have a nice night.
Thank you. Well, gosh, it seems like we have an action uh pending uh future future council consideration on that, chief. Um so anyway. Okay, is there anybody else to address council? Alrighty, council comments then and let's start to my far left. Councilmember Sternan?
I have nothing. Thank you, though.
Sarah?
I have, thanks. Okay. End of summer, a busy season, so I just want to reflect a little bit and say some thank yous. So first of all, Seth, thank you with the Parks Department and your team and. As always there, the building still be fantastic, but Sunrise Yoga. We had a record year on our tenth year. Thank you very much, Grant, for the pic. Uh the picture you did with the drone on our first day. That was popular. It's on there and I absolutely love it and everybody did as well. But we had um over the summer, one thousand two hundred and eighty-five attendees. Um we did not have yoga on the weekend of the Fourth of July, just because of attendance. Other than that, we did not miss a Saturday because of weather, so this was one of the. Um rare years where every Saturday it was beautiful. We get continued requests to continue this process into September, but it gets a little tricky. With football games and events and other things going on, so um. We're always open, but it's just a little harder to coordinate during that time. However, I just as a side note, again, ten years ago, we talk about history, ten years ago, we started this program. Again, free for anybody who hasn't um been out, our free yoga, all ages, all abilities, welcome. It started with fifteen to twenty people. Uh we sat in a circle around on the amphitheater stage with the instructor. Very simple time. Pretty soon it grew a little more in the next years where we had to get out onto the grass. And now we are to the point where the lowest, I'm looking at my screen, the lowest attendance day we had was eighty-five people. And the most was two hundred and twenty-five. So. It's really been a lot of fun to watch that part of our community come together and people come from all over. So thank you for all involved. Um another note, the garden is in full swing, the garden right out here um on the corner of City Hall property that that uh provides. Food for the food pantry. It's all part of Be Well Marion former Blue Zones project. We'd love to see the growth in the community of other gardens that are also working with the food pantry. So that's fantastic, this garden. And its previous location was at where the library is. We moved it a few years ago, so we are on. A year ten of the garden, but it's been in two locations. Um just, we will have a year in total, but last week they contributed fifty pounds of vegetables on one day. And this past week was sixty pounds of vegetables and that was just one of the two days that they did a drop off. So it's really coming into its own despite, I think there's some groundhogs under there and some really healthy rabbits that are enjoying the garden. Please mark your calendars for Wednesday, October fourth. That is the Healthy Estate Walk. More information to come, but we are targeting a walk here from. City Hall like we did last year, kind of a long road turnaround, come back and end up in the park. That's another free event. We would love to see a great turnout. Communities actually kind of compete against each other for that, but we just love to have a big crowd of our community. It's pretty leisurely pace. Thirty minutes. And then Grant, I don't know if you're gonna talk about the Intercultural Festival Sunday. You're gonna have that on there. Intercultural Festival um agenda. I think you're gonna be there, so I'll leave that to you to as a reminder. What I got?
Well.
Go Cyclones.
Cut that from the record. Um remind everyone that Saturday morning is the Fall into Marion Parade. Um ten A M parade route is from First Avenue. So Fifteenth Street from First Avenue up to Sixth Avenue West to Ninth Street where it ends. Um hopefully, we've got a lot of floats. I know I'll have a float in the parade. Well, a golf cart with some ribbons on it. Um but I'll be throwing out some, handing out some candy. I will be throwing and handing out candy. And then uh football started. Was that the eighth grade Marion game before I came here. Um my daughter's not playing football this year, unfortunately, but she's cheerleading, so I'm going to watch the cheerleaders. So yeah, a little different. Still at the football games, but. Um so that's all I got and uh go Hawks.
Okay with that. Yes, Steve.
So it is that time of year for all kinds of fall sports and I've been attending a lot of them for my with my granddaughters. But this is a busy weekend, obviously some major games out there like. Oh, maybe Green Bay, Chicago, maybe Iowa, Iowa State. But the one I'm most interested in is the first home game. At the new Marion football field, so I will be there tomorrow night.
Very cool. Gage.
Yeah, I can just second that, I guess. Other than that, I don't have any comments this week.
Okay. Well, just to pick up quickly uh on the football theme, um. You know, I feel like I'm operating behind enemy lines most of the time because I hear very rarely go Cyclones. Anyway, uh so that exposes where my allegiances might be, but uh the great thing is is that. Uh we do have a very competitive climate in this state and um whether it's win, lose or draw, it's it's always fun. Nonetheless. Um we concluded um this afternoon, uh what we believe to be our last meeting with our. Uh airport visioning team and um that group really provided a lot of input, at least uh to help. Uh me in in consideration of things and and uh this will be uh visible be before the city council over the next many weeks. Um one of the things that I really want to um thank the community for is the involvement on our various boards and commissions. Um there's hundreds of hours, I suspect, uh being poured into this. And without those boards and commissions, we certainly wouldn't be as effective um as uh we are. And so I just a general uh thank you for the level of effort that the community and our residents provide uh in that. Um regarding tomatoes, uh Sarah, we are, uh my wife and I are. Taking care of our neighbor's garden. That is now producing tons of tomatoes, so I will seek your guidance as to how I can dispense with those. But if anybody doesn't have their own sourcing of tomatoes, please let me know. Okay. Um. I think that that's all I have. I certainly appreciate everybody's attendance. Uh and involvement uh this evening, so we'll move now to uh. Uh our closed session. Motion. Yeah, go ahead.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to adjourn to closed session regarding real estate transactions as permitted under section twenty-one point five. One J of the code of Iowa.
Second.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded to uh adjourn in the closed session. May I please have the legal statement?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section twenty-one point five point J.
Okay, very good. Roll call vote?
Mr. Missaman?
Yep.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Menser?
Yes.
Mr. Sternan?
Yes. Okay, we are entering now closed session. Thank you very much, everyone.